I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next through.
First order of business is area plan.
Uh, first item is a request to rezone PCR dash twenty-two oh five. Petitioner and owner is Stratman Family Properties LLC by John Stratman is the managing member. The request is to rezone nine point four seven acres located on the south side of Stratman Lane, approximately nine hundred feet south at the intersection of Stratman Lane and Ayrshire Road, made PUD R one D, planned unit development consisting of a single family zoning, the PUD A, planned unit development consisting of agricultural, lot six in Stratman Johnson, PUD amended in Campbell Township. This was advertised in the standard on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and the area planning commission gave a unanimous positive recommendation for PCR twenty-two oh five at their meeting on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Glenn Merritt with Cash Wagner. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have. I know it's special use and what is there variance? It's coming up at six o'clock as well for.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Eleven would be the ordinance.
I'd ask for remonstrated.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this project? Does it appear that there are? Anyone like to make a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash one-one.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
I'm third.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
We have two sidewalk acknowledgements. Berkshire Phase Two by Macon Corporation. Daniel Yubler is the owner. This one is Whitechapel Drive at two thousand eight hundred twenty-one lineal feet for Bloomsbury Court at three hundred and thirty lineal feet. We are still holding the twelve thousand six sixty, which expires in September twenty-two, and they have had four years. And the county engineer has visited the site and signed off on the construction.
Are we good on that, Bobby?
Yeah, sidewalks are complete. Recommend release of the surety.
Make a motion to release surety.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Um, the next one's Berkshire Phase Four by Macon Corporation by Daniel Yubler owner, Bloomsbury Court at one thousand five hundred and seventy-two lineal feet, and we're holding the seven thousand three thirty-five, which expires in May. They've only had two years to do this, and the county engineer has signed up on that one as well.
Again, recommend surety.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And that's all I have.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Next item of business are items from discussions from County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm showing on, I got a little out of order. The first one is Clint Rose, who's the engineer for the city of Boonville, discuss Roth Road Water Main Extension. Bobby, I assume.
I've not received any.
You've not received anything, so that should be tabled.
Okay.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Next is the micro bolt annual maintenance agreement. Um, I was notified at two o'clock by first deputy that Patty was unable to make the meeting. I did send her email on April twenty-first to you and had a copy of that agreement attached. Uh, it's a one-page agreement. It's for four years. It costed thirteen thousand dollars per year, term from January first of this year through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five, and I did include counsel on that one-page agreement.
Yeah, it's been reviewed different things in order. It's the same agreement that has been in place for several years.
Right.
The, I will note that it's not going to be an annual agreement. It's a four-year, twenty-two through twenty-five.
Is the price the same for the four?
Thirteen thousand dollars every year. Uh, there is nothing in here about an increase.
That's a first.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's something we can cancel, but are we able to cancel within the four years with written notice or not? That matters.
Well, I think if we got their machines, we'll need them.
Right.
It doesn't have any language about canceling the contract, but uh, it is just a service maintenance agreement. The equipment is ours, but uh, it is equipment that is specific to their company though, so maybe we just couldn't find another, another company would.
It does state it's contingent upon the approval and appropriation of money. But it says by the commissioners, courts, and council, be asking them for that. Agreement for Terry's signature and the.
Four years.
All right. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Oh, you got the approval of minutes from April eleventh.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
A second then?
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Okay, go ahead, Roger. I'm thinking why that felt like that was out of order.
Uh, under my items, I would first mention the available dear of our voluntary Title Six Public Involvement Survey on the table over here. That's pursuant to our Title Six Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four and ADA compliance. First item I have is the services agreement with Bieber Lawn Lake and Forestry Services LLC, the twenty twenty-two aquatic services at Scales Lake Park. Uh, I sent Audrey's email to you on April the twelfth, which had that attached, the cost this year's services, which listed as algae control and lake dying, is seven thousand eight hundred dollars that is paid from the Scales Lake budget.
Is that agreement in order?
Uh, yes. Few uh, nation.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
To April twenty-sixth. It was from Drew on April the twentieth, payroll date, today's date, April twenty-fifth. Pamela Wilkinson sent that to us also on April the twentieth. Treasurers monthly report for the month ending March thirty-first of this year. Christine gave that to me after your April eleventh meeting, and I emailed you a copy of that on April the twelfth. Then the Clerk's monthly report for month ending January twenty-two, sent you a copy of that on April thirteenth. Clerk's monthly report for month ending March, uh, sent that to you five days later on the eighteenth. I don't know where the month of February went, but then we have our Waits and Measures monthly report from Mike Arnold, April sixteenth. The Judicial Center West entrances, there's two new awnings, which Sherry took care of those. Seamer's glass, four thousand two hundred dollars, a new copy machine leases without the laser, and Sherry also covered those in her April nineteenth uh, email.
Entertaining motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And I do have one last item, if you would, Mr. President. It's the proposed specific services agreement with Environmental Management Consultants LLC regarding Warrick County landfill number two. Uh, they are charged, they're a consultant for the IDIM mandated testing of our monitoring wells, both groundwater and methane. In this particular case, it's a proposed services agreement to, for monitoring well fifteen, twenty, and twenty-one. There was a certain exceedance in ammonia, and when upon their investigation, uh, ball back, they found that it was ant infestation, and so I am sending a letter back on February the seventh, uh, requesting I D M to uh, mitigate those for us. This specific services agreement is in the amount of six thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. That would be paid from the landfill post closure fund, and that is with EMC doing it, doing a turnkey job, which I think I would recommend. Um, they, we need to get this done. The reason I put it on because EMC's next required groundwater sampling event scheduled for the week of May the sixteenth. Uh, you've got one more meeting prior to that, but this will give them a little more preparation time. So I'm recommending you approve this by motion and signature blocks for each commissioner to sign, and that was also sent to council.
Everything's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, under the consent agenda, on the regular agenda, is the approval of the community safety grant application for the outdoor weather warning sirens, which you have approved, and that was under your consent, so it's part of the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Thank you, sir.
Next item of business is our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items for you today. Uh, the first one is discussing the right-of-way bond. This is for uh, roadway, uh, New Harmony Road, uh, was used by Liberty Mine in order to transport their trucks uh, back and forth from the coal mines, uh, to customers and to the mine. The uh, commissioners had identified that this was a road that was in need of repair and had not been repaired, and when these uh, coal companies do ask for roads to be closed, they sign an agreement for road usage that requires them to keep the road updated and maintained, and when they're finished with it, to replace it back in as good or better condition as when they got it. Uh, commissioners had asked us to look into uh, the bond that was posted uh, by Alcoa Fuels Inc. on behalf of Liberty Mine, bond amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and whether or not that bond could be called in order to update and repair the road, Liberty, uh, New Harmony Road, uh, since it has not, it is not up to county standards.
I would correct the amount of the bond. It's one hundred eighty-two thousand.
Oh, thank you, Roger. The uh, that, that is an option for the commissioners. Uh, we certainly could do that. Uh, I know Alcoa uh, had reached out, Alcoa Fuels had reached out, uh, at one point, I believe last week, stating they uh, would entertain fixing the road. I know the county has gotten quotes for what it'd take to fix the road, uh, so if commissioners would like, they could uh, make a motion to uh, call the bond in two weeks and give Alcoa time to come up with a plan and maybe do, work with council to create a memorandum of understanding, addressing what they're going to do to the satisfaction of the highway engineer to fix the road, and if they can't come up with that plan within a certain period of time, then the commissioners go ahead and move forward. We'll present at the next meeting the documents that would, commissioners to sign or to call that bond.
I do have the original bond here.
So I'll just add a little color to the conversation. There have been many emails and many conversations. I know Dan's gotten phone calls and I think Bob's gotten phone calls from, but the bottom line is the road is not insatisfactory. And um, you know, the conversations that I've had have been that uh, we have two options. We call the bond, put the road back like the agreement says, or find some happy middle ground that we can all shake hands on, and Bobby has determined what he's accepted as a county engineer, and uh, that's, that's the middle ground. So if we can, if we can work toward that common goal, I would be okay with not pulling that bond today at this meeting.
And that is just for maintenance of the roadway now. They still have to put it back to an accepted standard when they are finished. I just wanted to clarify.
Correct. Um, I would like some sort of official line in the sand, may, so what is that?
The uh, commissioners could entertain a motion to uh, call the bond, well, to put that, a motion could be made to direct council to prepare the documents for commissioner's signature at the next board meeting for calling the bond, and if in the meantime, an agreement can be worked out, then the commissioners don't have to actually act on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's, uh, that's what I feel comfortable with. Um, I know, like Terry said, we've, we've both had conversations with Alcoa, uh, with uh, high-level management and the plant manager, and uh, I think personally, I think there's just a communication gap here between either plant manager who makes the call and maybe the, the boots on the ground over here in, in the, in the facility, and so uh, I, I think I like Terry's idea that we need to draw a line in the sand and, and make sure this gets fixed, because now I think it's a, it's a concern that I have, and I think all the commissioners have for liability and, and the kind of, so I'm, I'd be good with that.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to direct legal council to prepare a notification to call the bond. Is that right?
Yes, and pending final approval at the next meeting.
Yes, and, and we will make that final determination at our next board meeting in, is that May? Roger, what date is that?
Uh, I'm gonna have a calendar in front of me.
I think.
May.
May ninth.
May ninth. I can't turn the page. All right, so, May ninth. May ninth. Bobby's right.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. The other item on the agenda is discussion of sixth ambulance added to service Warrick County by Warrick County EMS. This is a discussion, uh, that the commissioners I know have been discussing needing additional ambulance in Warrick County. Uh, Warrick EMS has expressed an interest in providing another ambulance. Uh, it's also, there's only two years left of the current tenured contract with Warrick EMS, um, so uh, there is currently three hundred thousand dollars budgeted already out of the fund for another ambulance. Uh, we did receive a quote, uh, pricing actually from Warrick EMS, it actually cost three hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars for that ambulance, so uh, there'd be, there would be an additional appropriation presented at the June second council meeting for that additional fifty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars to cover that ambulance. Uh, given that we have a month yet before that can be presented to the council, do this meeting, um, we explore both the negotiations with Warrick County EMS about the contract and explore any other opportunities that the county may have until that meeting or even the meeting after, uh, to decide ambulance services in the future and the sixth ambulance.
Well, Tony and I talked about him maybe coming and giving us a quick update, but he pretty much said everything that needed to be said, so you're welcome to come up if you, if you'd like to.
Tony O'Neil with Warrick EMS, thank you for having me. Um, you, you did a great job for covering that. I, I did want to just share a little bit on the additional appropriation is the sixth truck, we have to stop that truck, which means monitor cotton and everything, so it's, it's not just the cost of the ambulance as it is to, to equip that ambulance to operate. So that's where the additional funds needed to come in to at least get this truck up and going, and I'd just like to say that I appreciate commissioners looking at this and, and looking at this six ambulance. It's a great need for the county with our volume and how that has increased, and we have been a partnership with, with Warrick County for many, many years, and we look forward to working with you guys in the future as well.
Tony, if you don't mind, just, just for everybody in Warrick County, I, I know the answer, but can you remind us how many times you were without an ambulance during the month?
Well, uh, this month, I would, I'm just shooting off the top of my head, I'm gonna say probably uh, fifteen to twenty times. Twice today, uh, we were without ambulances in the county because of volume, so uh, great need. We continue to grow uh, in our volume, and uh, this six ambulance would, would benefit the county greatly.
I agree. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else to add?
There's no official action needed today. Uh, we can table that to the next meeting and continue our investigation into the ambulance services.
We can continue to explore all of our options and just get down the road here to the next meeting.
So I make a motion to table till our May ninth meeting.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all I have today.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next order of business is our county acquisitions manager, Sherry Severs.
Sherry Severs, Warrick County Acquisition Administrator, and pursuant to IC Code five dash twenty-two dash eight dash two, um, looking to get a new picnic table for the patio on the west side of the Judicial Center on the new patio, uh, that was built by, uh, I believe Matt Whistler's group on the backside. And before you, I have several bids. Uh, the front sheet just gives you an overall view. Um, I, I've drawn to scale, uh, the patio and the placement of each size there. So, um, the first one I've got's through Barco Products, um, and it's for the eight-foot recta- rectangular table. Um, it shows what it, the cost, materials, the coating, and the warranty. That one, uh, retails for one thousand three ninety-eight eighty-five. None of these prices include shipping, um, and that particular product, and there are pictures in your packet there, that particular product is made in China. The second one is for forty-six inch square table, uh, from Barco Products, uh, also made in China for one thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. The third in your packet is a custom built from Parker Ironworks for three thousand nine sixty-two, and that is for an eight-foot rectangular. Uh, the last two are from Premier Polysteel Company, and uh, the eight-foot rectangular is one thousand two sixty-three, and the forty-eight inch square versus a forty-six inch square is one thousand four hundred and fourteen, and those are made in the USA.
Sherry, where, where, do we have a photo? Oh, never mind. Go ahead. Oh, okay.
Yeah, for Parkers.
Got it.
Um, and shipping is not included on this. Uh, shipping, I do know for Premier is going to be around, uh, five hundred and twenty-some odd dollars and some change.
Sherry, I, on the Parkers, they're asking for fifty percent deposit. I don't know if that's something we can do.
How much shipping is on the Premier Polysteel?
Five hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Oh, okay. So you got two of, so both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't know if you've done this or not, but can, can two of the four-foot square picnic tables fit in inside this patio area?
Commissioner Johnson, you probably could, but if you see my broken line there, uh, that starts to slope down a little bit if I'm not mistaken, and I, I don't think it would set properly.
Okay, thank you.
Does this area exactly curve?
Yeah, and there, and there is a curb going around there. My program didn't allow me to do that.
And these are all, they're all poly-coated?
Yes, um, that Premier, uh, Polysteel, they, they put the coating over the entire frame, not just the tabletop and the seats, and it's, it's got both poly, um, Premier Polysteel and Barco Products, both have a twenty-year warranty on their product, uh, but the, uh, Polysteel is guaranteed not to rust because the coating is one eighth inch thick over the entire structure.
I know we have some of this stuff out at Van Road Park, and it's, it's lasted well over twenty years, as long as it doesn't get nicked, it's pretty well.
Yeah. And both those from Premier Polysteel, they have an area to put.
Yeah.
An umbrella in it. I know at one point, we talked about getting some type of awning there.
Terry.
Uh, we're gonna get some bids on that, but.
Some more square area, anyone?
Well, that's fine.
Uh, we were just talking square. I like the USA made, did they give you a?
But I can have that for you as early as tomorrow.
I like the square, the square, um.
I agree.
I make a motion to approve the, um, Premier Polysteel heavy-duty commercial picnic table of forty-eight inch square for fourteen hundred and fourteen dollars.
Second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
I'll teach you how to use Excel so I can make pictures like that. Okay, let's see here. Your next order of business is, uh, from our Community Corrections and Drug Court. You are here.
Hello.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Foose, Director of Warrick, Warrick Services, where I serve as the Director of Community Corrections and the Drug Court Coordinator. This afternoon, I'm here to present our annual grant application, uh, which the Department of Corrections asked that we receive our commissioner's approval on. Last year, we received a total of two hundred and ninety-five two seventy-nine in the Community Corrections Grant Award, and the Drug Court received seventy-four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, just to tell you a little bit about, um, Community Corrections briefly before I get jumped like right into that grant application, uh, we served approximately, um, fifty-four people over the twenty-twenty-one year. Um, out of those individuals, seventy-six percent of them were successful completions of them, those who did participate in our program and they successfully completed. Um, the ultimate goal is to reduce their recidivism or their risk of reoffending, and um, we look at assessing their risk levels when they first come into our program by the time that they end our program, and throughout the program, we plug in interventions in order to help reduce that risk level. So eighty-three percent of the people who did successfully complete had, um, shown an actual risk reduction. So just to, our numbers and some stats, um, that's where we are. Um, with Community Corrections, we have about six different staff members. Uh, we have the, myself as the Director of Community Corrections and Operations Manager. Um, he, electronic monitoring equipment and the monitoring of our participants. We have a case manager who works one-on-one daily with, with a caseload. Um, on average, we have approximately twenty-four, um, daily under supervision with Community Corrections. Um, and then we have. We have a case manager who works one-on-one daily with, with a caseload. On average, we have approximately twenty-four daily under supervision with Community Corrections. And then we have three positions that are collaborative positions between ourselves and the Drug Court Office. And so we have two people who are titled as our Program Assessors/Facilitators, so they assess individuals when they first are referred to our program to deem whether or not one eligible and two, if they're appropriate for supervision. And then they also provide programming for the client base that we work with. And then our other shared position is our Field Officer, who conducts employment, checks in the, in the client's employment, home checks in their residence, and just doing other general field checks with our clients. With the total number that we serve on average, to house an inmate in the Indiana Department of Corrections, it's about $52 and some change daily. So with approximately twenty-four on average within our program, we're saving taxpayers over $1,000, over $1,200 a day. And then annually, that breaks down to over $460,000 a year. So just a little bit of info about Community Corrections. What you have in front of you, the first packet is your Community Corrections Grant Application. That grant application goes over our Statement of Need, which talks about the need here, just specifically within Warrick County. I also include in that Statement of Need the numbers of individuals that are also, and how Community Corrections may be a little bit different than jail-based services. We have a target population. We do tend to serve moderate, anywhere from low to high-risk clients. Moderate is that, is kind of our sweet spot that we serve, and they can be anywhere within misdemeanors or within felony-level individuals. Our program consists of three different levels of supervision. We provide home electronic monitoring, which is GPS equipment that we place on the client's person. And then we have three different levels of supervision, where our first two levels require the, the electronic monitoring equipment for those individuals, and the third one is more of a day reporting program and supervision. We do offer, like I said, case management services, where the clients come in and meet with the case manager daily. They work on goals and interventions in their areas of need in order to strengthen those areas and prepare them for their release back into the community. We utilize an assessment system that is recognized across the state of Indiana for all Community Corrections, probation, drug courts. So you'll also see or know that our probation uses the exact same assessment system as, as we do, as well as our Drug Court. This year, for our budget, which you'll see at the back of our packet, it starts with, it's sideways, the way that it printed out, is that Corrections is asking for a total grant budget of $272,303, $272,303 in grant funds from the Indiana Department of Corrections. On the first page, highlighted in yellow, and it says Warrick County Community Corrections Supervision, it's like this. That's going to break down your different series of our one hundred, two hundred, three hundred. Community Corrections is functioning based out of funding from the Indiana Department of Corrections and our program user fees, as well as a program that's called Community Transition. And that Community Transition helps to transition offenders coming back from the Department of Corrections where they're housed in prison and transitioning them back into our community. So we do receive reimbursement for that, for each person that we have under supervision. So our total project income budget that we would anticipate for fiscal year 2023 would be $179,072.77, making an overall total program budget for Community Corrections of $451,375.77. Again, we don't pull directly from any county dollars to, to provide this programming. We are so very fortunate to be housed in a county building, where we do get those in-kind services of building space and phones, utilities, if we need maintenance or custodial services, those are offered to us. So looking at what the county provides for Community Corrections is, is very, we are very grateful for that. But the bulk of our funding does come from this grant that you're seeing the application for here today. The grant, I do have it broken down to where, if you look on page two, it shows how it's broken out of our one hundred series. I have moved a lot of our salaries to our grant funding in order to ensure that we are fully utilizing the entirety of our grant whenever those funds do come in. And then on the following page, it breaks down our fringe benefits. The next page will go over our supplies. And the final, the next page goes over services, and then the final page will go over any kind of equipment that we request funding for. The one thing that is different this year in our grant budget is that the Department of Corrections has asked for any collaborative or shared positions to be included into one grant application. We used to share them or split them between the two. So what you'll see is Community Corrections has increased to be able to take on all of those positions, and then we've lessened the grant amount through the Drug Court application.
She answered my only question.
Yep. So you'll see that there is a hefty increase in our budget this year, just because I'm pulling those salaries and the payroll and the fringe all over to Community Corrections, instead of that being the Drug Court's responsibility. The next packet of information that you'll have, at the top, it's blue, it's Warrick County Drug Driving and Drug Court Program Application. Just to tell you a little bit about the Warrick County Drug Court Program, on average, we have approximately forty-one participants under supervision. That's a daily cost savings of $2,157 or greater. Over a year, it would be $787,000 that it saves. The two programs combined, looking at the IDOC, $261,000 times the number that we serve within, totally having an annual cost savings combined, $1,000 or greater. The Drug Court had twenty-six admissions over the last year, and they had nineteen individuals graduate the program with many successes, such as people obtaining associate's degrees, driver's license, GEDs. There's, there's so many successes, I could go on and on about. That's not exactly what I'm here for today. I'm here to present this application. So with the, with the Drug Court, we actually have another, an additional, let me count real quick, seven staff over there, if you include myself. Now that I'm a conservative shared position as well, we have the Assessor Facilitators that are shared, the Field Officer that's shared, and then we have two case managers and an additional clerical staff over there that's shared, that's with the Drug Court Program. We are asking for this Drug Court Program's budget. We're asking for a budget of $10,000 in the IDOC grant funds and application. This is not changed from the year prior. We have moved, the only thing that has changed was the moving of the staff wages and the fringe benefits, which moved over to the Community Corrections budget. Outside of that, we are just asking for approximately $7,000 in supplies and $3,000 in services for our Drug Court agency. In addition to both of our budgets, I did electronically send a collaboration plan. It is pretty, it is pretty thick or hefty, so I did not print that out for you today. But just to briefly overview that, again, we have three shared positions between the two departments, and that does not include my own position, now that I'm overseeing both of the departments. Our programs that we offer, we offer a cognitive behavioral thinking and modification course for our participants, to help them think before they act, simply put. And then we share the costs and the supplies of that between the two agencies. So workbooks, materials needed, supplies, classroom needs, we share those amongst both agencies. Across our criminal justice system, we all share that same risk assessment that I had talked about before through probation, corrections, and drug court. We share training information, we share training opportunities, and we share training costs. So between the two departments, we are picking up from one another's staff and the costs there are to train. We share general information, if we have mutual or shared clients, and we have releases to be able to consent to the sharing of that information. We're able to share that information with, if they're in Community Corrections over to Drug Court and vice versa, or even onto probation, once they've completed our supervision. Community Corrections and Drug Court both provide drug testing services for agencies outside of our buildings as well. So probation may send referrals, Department of Child Services, The Guardian at Lyman, and the Courts send referrals to us both for drug testing services. And then we also share our field equipment and materials with our shared field officer. We rotate the use of our vehicles as well. So we have Community Corrections vehicles, and we have Drug Court vehicles, and we just swap those on and off, so that not one is getting more wear or tear than the other. And we're also sharing those fuel costs and the equipment, as such as the laptop that's in the vehicle, any field equipment, uniform needs amongst the two departments. That is all that I have to, to share with you today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for, for either of the departments. But what I would be asking today is for the approval of our grant application for Community Corrections and for Drug Court, as well as our collaboration sharing plan that I had briefly explained.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I have some questions. What, Jennifer, how many people do you see your service on an annual basis?
Through our Community Corrections Program, I believe the number that I had shared early was right around fifty-four, is how many we saw last year.
Okay, then, so how many, so how many through the Drug Court and the Drug Driving Program?
I don't have that number in front of me of the total served last year, but on average, we have forty-one on the caseload. I think it was sixty-eight is what my number reflected, but I'm not, I don't want to give you that one hundred percent. We were right around that. Yeah, we had, we had some very full graduations.
Do you have any of your people do community service or anything like that? Just, I, I know, you know, we've tried, and I don't know if it's, it was with you guys or through one of the courts, but it just seems like, I've, I've got comments about, about this program in that we spend a lot of money for so few people. How, but, but I hear you talk about savings, you know, savings, saving the county a lot of money. Is, is there a way that we get more people into this program? Do they have to qualify to get in these?
Yeah.
Or how do we service more people?
Yeah. So the way that the process works is that when a client comes into court, they're facing charges, they come into court, their attorney may seek different alternative options, the alternative to jail options. By doing so, they would order an evaluation to be conducted by one of our two agencies. That's where our assessors and our facilitators come in, they'll conduct an evaluation on the individual. That individual will then be deemed whether or not they are eligible for the program, because there are certain qualifiers. For both programs, we do not take sex offender or violent offenders, for example. So we have to deem their eligibility first, and then whether or not they're appropriate for that program. If they're ready for that, they have the desired motivation to change, if they're ready to change. We'll evaluate those individuals, and then after they're evaluated, they're staffed with a team, and then they are, they're notified, or actually the courts are notified, whether or not that they are eligible and appropriate for our services that we offer. With this being said, those referrals are coming from either the court, prosecution, or defense attorneys. So that's how we get our client's base, is through the referrals of other individuals within the county. I hope that helped to answer the referral question. Regarding community service, I've been in Warrick County now in this position for Community Corrections Director for six years, and one of the first things I had noticed when I came was that our community service is not really streamlined, we're kind of spread out. So if the courts order someone who is on probation to community service, probation will oversee that community service. If they order someone to Community Corrections Supervision and then also give them community service hours that are ordered, then Community Corrections oversees that. And the same way with Drug Court as well. So the place in which is hosting their supervision is the one that hosts the community service as well. Over the last year, I can tell you the number of hours we've had at Community Corrections. In 2021, we had a total of two hundred and three community service hours. And I will say that out of those hours, not all clients actually live within Warrick County that we serve. So sometimes we supervise individuals who may be in any of our borderline counties. So some of those hours may have been conducted or fulfilled in Vanderbilt County, Du Bois, Pike, et cetera.
So can we make a motion to approve both grant applications and the?
Simple.
Yeah, at the same time?
Yes, it can be both at the same time.
Okay.
Make a motion to allow Ms. Foose to apply for the two grants, or is it three grants?
Two grant applications.
Two grant applications for the Warrick County Drug Driving and Drug Court Program and the Warrick County Community Corrections.
Second then?
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next item of business is County Engineer in Highway Department.
Thank you. I just have the one item tonight. It's the approval of the Bridge 298 Maintenance Plans and Specifications for Bidding. This is a Warrick Town Road Bridge, and the maintenance is a concrete deck overlay. We will have another one of these coming up for Bridge 148, hopefully this year as well. But this was a Community Crossings Grant-funded project, so fifty percent is state-funded awarded in the last.
Spencer County butts up, right?
Spencer County does butt up to this, and we did talk to them briefly about helping it. Was not, they were non-responsive from those days. So I'd just like a motion to approve the plans and specifications for bidding on May 23rd. Give the paper this week and next week. And we are changing the leave from thirty days to sixty days of paying the contractor. Is there anything else?
Just add some insured language.
I think we added some of that language.
Do you know how much insurance they're supposed to carry?
I'll make sure it's in there.
Okay.
Add just a couple extra words here.
Okay. So approved subject to the council's review of that. So I make a motion to approve the Bridge 298 Maintenance Plan for Bidding, subject to counsel, legal counsel's additions and approval.
I'll second. I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
I motion carries three zero.
I'll take it fully, everybody.
Mr. There's anything else?
No, sir.
Two, would you like to speak about this?
First of all, I wanted to tell you, I didn't plan this. I believe that God brought me here, if you allow me the courage to say that. I want you to know also that I will invite you here when I sit, before I sit down, and I'm a little nervous about being in front of you guys, because this is my first time I've ever done this. And I want to thank you, all of you, for your support, those of you that have been very supportive the past few years. I've been a member of the Ohio Tenship Library, it's now Newburgh Chandler, and I'm on the Policy Committee. And I want to tell you who I am, because you have faith in me, or you wouldn't have kept me there, okay? But I want you to know, the first time I met with them, I said, I want you to know, at this table, these will be the values that I represent. And we had our first policy meeting, I'm on the Policy Committee, I said the same thing to them. I said, I'm a licensed mental health counselor, have been for years. I'm a licensed social worker, have been for years. I'm also clergy at Children's Hospital, have been for years. Anytime I stand before people or speak out, and I'm always asking questions, my friend Dan knows that, but I want to know. And I told the Director recently, I said, it's not that I want conflict, I just want to understand. And sometimes there is conflict within the structure of the library, because I wish more people from the public would come in, because it'd make my job easier too. I wouldn't have to ask so many questions and follow through so much. But it's a good library system, and we're very proud of the fact that it's just been renovated and took a while for Chandler to reopen and try to find out what was happening there. So I've really been intentionally trying to be a woman of integrity there, and I try to do that wherever I go. But I just want to thank you, because it's not that easy to be that person, because I know there's a need to conform more and more. And it's scary, because we got to have courage sometimes. Even you gentlemen know well what I'm Even you gentlemen know well what I'm talking about, when you have to speak up, and then also support what you believe in, even though it's not always everyone wanting to agree. So at my table, wherever I go, we can agree to disagree, but I'm here to tell you, I thank you for that opportunity, and also, I'm concerned about the government. I know the election's approaching, so everyone that I know about within most parties really trying hard to build government and to protect their freedoms. So there's still that need, as I just said, I believe, not really, when it's something that's so significant that we agree to disagree. So thank you for what you're doing here, around, just as I have been around. I'm just glad we're still around, because there's still more work to do. But back to the invitation, I wanted to give the flyer to you, dear friend, Mr. President, but at the same time, everyone is invited. One thing I believe in is the power of prayer, and usually when I gather for breakfasts, they ask me to pray, and I believe that prayer really makes a difference. So I challenge you, if you want to come, you can pray anyway, and most people do believe in the power of prayer, even the 12-step program, as I all know about it. I appreciate what Jennifer said. It's never easy sometimes to work with selected groups, but yet, we have to care, gentlemen. We have to care. And so this is my first time to be before the county commissioners. I hope to be back again. I thank you again for your support, and if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them, and I'm not afraid of questions, so if you do have some concerns...
For the public's knowledge, this is Thursday, May 5th this year, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on the courthouse block.
Well, yes, and then if it rains, it will be at the Worship Center. And I've been, when I was at Evansville, I lived there for about 30 years, and I've been in Warwick County back again 30 years. And my husband and I were very community-minded, and I've been a part of both groups in Evansville. I started the National Day of Prayer, working with interfaith groups for 15 years, I did that, and since I've been back in Warwick, I've been working with that. So thank you very much. But you're welcome. Any questions for me, because this may be a time, I'll be up for review again come 2023, and I'm willing to do this as long as you want me. If you guys ever have somebody else in mind, I won't be threatened by that, because I got other things to do. But I love books, I'm a serious reader. If you went to my home, you'd see my big library, and I use the books, and I take time to talk to patrons, I take time to talk to workers there, and I try to be friendly. And I believe there is a reason for showing up. Thank you. So any questions or any comments?
I have a statement. So Sue, I appreciate you serving on that board, and I know as long as you're there, I can let my grandkids go in there, I have nothing to worry about. So thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, dear sir. Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm glad I have your acceptance, but I'm ready to do what you want me to do. And reasonably, you would never ask me to do something that you wouldn't want me to do. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. God bless all of you.
Thank you.
And that invitation is for all, and if you don't even show up for that, I believe most of you believe in the power of prayer. Thank you. Please remember, government, locally, stately, nationally, we got to connect with each other and care. God bless you. Thank you.
Bless you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.